Ms. Sebastian, are we ready?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 25th, 2013 to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Kostic.
Here.
Now on here.
Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Floyd.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda is recognition. And Dr. Lathan?
Good afternoon. Ms. Myers, if you would come up, please, and present Peoria's Finest Teacher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and/or reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Mike Barber, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of our winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Jeff Vanegas, and on behalf of Jeff, Laura Bali, if you'll come forward, she'll be speaking to this. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Nicole Zalinski at Rolling Acres. Come on up, Nicole. Congratulations.
For this month's nomination, it's not a matter of what do I have to say, but rather, where do I begin? Nicole Zalinski, or as she is known at Rolling Acres, Ms. Z, is a tremendous teacher and one of the best-kept secrets in District 150. To her students, Ms. Z is loving, nurturing, and challenging. Her classroom is like one out of a magazine, and I'm sure her students see her as the Mary Poppins of teachers, practically perfect in every way. When looking into her classroom, students are always engaged in learning, and you can tell that Ms. Z truly loves what she does on a day-to-day basis. To the staff members at Rolling Acres, Z is a dedicated, professional teacher leader and invaluable on our staff. Among other things, she develops lessons for school-wide intervention classes and leads the school's universal leadership team and her grade-level team. As one staff member at Rolling Acres said, "She pours her heart and soul into her profession, and her determination never ceases. She always puts forth 100% effort into everything she does." I am fortunate that I'm able to introduce this month's winner of Peoria's Finest Teacher, as I know there are easily 100 other people in the district who would do so. Congratulations to Nicole Zalinski, our November Teacher of the Month. Thank you very much. When I was trying to think about what to say tonight, I found it really difficult to kind of speak on myself. If you asked me to speak about my staff members, it'd be very natural and easy for me to do so. Taking Laura Bali, for instance, who just spoke, her classroom produces the most unbelievable artwork that you could imagine, and she's so willing to help us to teach our own curriculum in her art classroom. For example, right now she's helping me to teach the concept of Anna Monoplia in my English Language Arts class through visual arts. When I work with staff members like Laura Bali, which there are a lot of them at Rolling Acres, it makes my job really easy to come to each morning. At Rolling Acres, each of us possesses a skill set and comes to school with a purpose, and when we bring those skill sets and those purposes together, we together form Rolling Acres Middle School. And I am very proud of where I come from, and I'm very proud of the roots that I have grounded myself in in my seven years of teaching in District 150. God has shown His grace in my seven years of teaching because He has paved a true yellow-brick road for me. For my entire career has been filled with leaders like Mr. Barber, mentors like Tracy Cooper, and co-teachers like Carly Emkin. It is with great appreciation to the Peoria Federation of Teachers for this moment of spotlight. It's really an encouragement to me and a motivation to continue to work really hard for my families that come through my classroom. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we have any announcements this evening?
Yes.
Dr. Lathan?
Once again, congratulations to Ms. Z. Parent University, next meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, December 4th, at Von Steuben. So, the displays behind us tonight have been prepared and presented on behalf of Von Steuben Middle School. So, once again, Parent University, next Wednesday, December 4th, at 5:30 at Von Steuben. Thank you to Ms. Forman and her staff for the bulletin board displays.
Ms. Wolfher.
I'd just like to mention that last Wednesday night, some of the administrators and Mrs. Kostic and I had an opportunity to, the PCCI, which is the group that oversees the SIG grant at Peoria High, had an opportunity to meet at the East Bluff Community Center at Bernard Hall. And I just wanted to say it was very exciting to go through and see what they have been, it's a group of individuals in the community and neighborhood associations that have sort of put that together, and it was gratifying, since I live on the East Bluff, to see what they have created there, what they're providing for our students, because they're pretty much all District 150 students. And we were able to tour the building and talk with them, and they are very interested in partnering with us in any way we can, as far as if we need meeting rooms or anything like that. Like I said, the programs that come in there are serving our students, and we are going to look for ways that we can assist them with maybe some equipment that we have in some of our closed buildings that they can use, that they wouldn't have to purchase. And so, it was just a very, very good intermingling with that group, and I think it's going to be a very good partnership in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Regarding Parent University, we just had one at Hind School last week, and the parking lot was full, and the gymnasium was pretty full, too. It was a very good turnout and a good program. So, that's, it's obvious that the number of people attending Parent Universities has been growing.
And I was there, although a little bit late, and we appreciate all these staff members who stay out late to talk to us, and all of the parents who are willing to sit in tiny little student chairs for very long periods of time.
Okay. Any other announcements? With that, then, could we have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 12th, 2013 Board Meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments, questions? There being none, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. We come to information items, and the first is Remarkable Rule Number Three, Respect of Finances. This is with the audit presentation with Clifton Larson Allen and Dr. Kenny. So, gentlemen, please take it away.
While Mr. Atkinson is getting ready, we also have Ryan Schmidgall here, one of the guys that assisted with the audit. It's gone on for a number of months, as it does every year, and we enjoy having them around, working on this, so. Yes. So. When you're ready, go ahead, Mr. Atkinson.
I don't know if I believe any of that. Can everybody hear me okay from here? Okay, I didn't know if this was close enough or not. But again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present our, you know, some of the highlights of the audit or the financial information from your year-end June 30th, and also just, you know, thank you again. I've been doing this for, worked with the district for several years, and we certainly enjoyed the opportunity. And we are here for quite a while, and I know we become, we become kind of part of the group at times, but we apologize for that, so. Okay, so, I just want to, I want to start, kind of like I always have, with the educational fund. And just, and just from a high level here, this just compares, you know, revenues and expenditures for 2012 versus 2013, and you can, and you can see in total there for 2013 compared to '12, a decrease of around 521,000, and expenditures, an increase of about 1.1 million. One thing I want to point out, and it's in several places throughout the presentation here is, and you all, I think, know this, is those revenues and expenditures also include the on-behalf payments for TRS, the state contributes as well. So, that increase was about 2.2 million for 2013, or an increase of about 2.2 million in 2013, so just to keep that in mind. The other thing I'd like to point out here with this slide is, is the fund balance. 2013, we started with, started the school with 6.5 million approximately and ended with 8.9 million in the educational fund. I went back and I was curious, I had kind of forgot some of the numbers from 11 and 10. In 2010, there was actually a fund deficit of, in the educational fund, of about 6.8 million. So, since 2000, the end of 2010, the educational fund has increased the fund balance by 15.7 million, if my math's right. If we break down the educational fund a little bit, this slide here is more of the significant revenues of the district. You can see property taxes, down about 770,000. I think everybody knows that, was expecting that. That wasn't a surprise with the decrease in property tax values of, I think about 2% from the 2010 to 2011, 2010 to 2011 tax levy, and then down another 2.2% from the 2011 to 2012 levy. So, I don't think anything unexpected there. The personal property replacement taxes, overall, this was a nice surprise and has continued to stay strong for the district. In total, this is just the amount for the educational fund for '13 is 9.8 million, but in total, that held at 11, I think in total was about 11.5 million compared to 11.25 million in 2012. So, and there was, there was additional dollars allocated to the educational fund for that in 2013. So, a nice little increase, and also nice that it held steady the way it did. The next line, public PBC bond refund, that's a savings from the 1993 bonds.
Right.
That was returned to the district this year, so 6.8 million. There was also 7.3 million that was returned in 2012 from the 1992 levy. So, general state aid, held relatively steady for the year. State grants and aid, those decreased, I think mainly, I think that was attributable to special ed extraordinary and the early childhood block grant, I think is the two biggest things, reasons for the decrease there. Moving down to the federal sources, you can see the Title I School Improvement Grant for Peoria High and Manuel, 4.1 million this year, and then 3.3. The other thing I'd like to point out is, we're all well aware of the rest of the R funds going away or nonexistent anymore. So, an overall decrease to the district there, so.
You might just explain what that acronym stands for.
That was American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, I guess, that was put in place in 2010.
2010, yeah.
It was the first year that we received some of those, that the district received dollars, and there were various Title I, there was the Education Jobs Stimulus, I think there was a teacher. Yeah, teacher, yeah. There was a pretty big piece of it for some time. Technology, IDA, so different things flowed through there.
It was called, so-called stimulus money that came.
Stimulus money, yes. Thank you.
Can we ask questions as you go through the slides?
Sure, anytime, just anytime.
On the general state aid, and Dr. Kenny, maybe you need to answer this. Between 2012 and 2013, did the percentage that we were funded drop in 2013?
The appropriations dropped. What helps us a little bit is our increase in our poverty grants.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
So, that does help.
Because there was a drop, but then there's something else that made up.
Yeah, we're missing about five and a half million of what, if it had been fully appropriated each of those two years, so. Or actually, last year and this year.
Yeah. Sorry, I should have pointed it out. But, yeah, stop me anytime. This was coming, some of my notes on there. But if we move on to the, if we move on to the expenditures in the education fund, I've got two slides here. I'm gonna, I've got this slide in here, but I'm going to skip to the next one. I think it breaks it down by category, and I can go back if you'd like. I think this just breaks it down a little better, I guess. But so if you look at, if you look at salaries, increased 2.2 million. I think if you look at the general increases, and there were some additional personnel in, I think, different counselors and social workers, and along with the general increases, I don't think there was anything unexpected or out of the ordinary there. The employee benefits is up 2 million, but again, you remember I was talking about the on-behalf payments and that increased 2.2 million? Well, that 2.2 million is included in that, in that increase. So, if you exclude that, the benefits are down slightly. Purchase services down slightly. Supplies and material, I think if you, if you remember back in 2012, there was, there were significant purchases for textbooks and different supplies where, you know, obviously we didn't have that in 2013. And I think there were some, there were some planned items that just didn't get, that just didn't, weren't purchased in 2013, that may have been budgeted for, but didn't, didn't come through in 2013.
Could you just explain briefly the on-behalf issue, because it's, it's a little murky for some folks to understand how that really works?
Yeah, that, it's, it's, how do I explain it? It's, it's the amount of, it's the amount of payments that the state of Illinois makes to TRS for retirement benefits. That's, it's not a cash item to the district, but it is reported in your statements as revenue to the district and also an expenditure of the district. Same amount, kind of grosses up both of them. So, it, it has a tendency to distort things a little bit, I think, but...
It's actually a pass-through, though.
It's a pass-through, yes.
Real quick, under salaries, the 2.2 million, the change, that isn't necessarily all new employees. That would also include any negotiated increases for employees and that kind of thing.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
I've always viewed that on-behalf as kind of an artificial number, because the only place you ever hear anything about it is when we do an audit. There's a matching revenue to an expenditure, and it's not anything we really see in any report until we do the audit.
That's right. I was just looking for the total.
I have a question while we're waiting for Dr. Lathan. So, as we look at the supplies and materials and the difference between 2012, 2013, does that say that we then pretty much have acquired the things that are needful to help us fulfill academic achievement and the strategic plan and all that, that we are, I guess, I'm wondering, you know, with that change and that being down, does it mean that we're going to continue to see that go down, or we just didn't have to?
It was just based on the purchases for this past year, but we still have focuses on technology. We still have ways to go across the district with our different, in our different schools, as it relates. So, you'll see that.
So, we can see a jump in that, in the next, okay.
See that change over the next year. But it won't change much. You'll hear about that later on as we move forward.
I found that number, the total amount of those on-behalf payments is 18,570,000. That kind of is reported as revenue and expense item, both, for reporting purposes, so. Any other questions with the educational fund? I was going to, before I move on to operations and maintenance? So, the operations and maintenance fund, same thing, I guess. There's two things going on with the revenue there. You've got a decrease in 2013 of 836,000. One is the property tax decreases that we talked about, that's impacting the, this fund. And then, another big portion of it, and you can see down there at the bottom, was the amount that was allocated for replacement taxes. And the, and the two of them together equal about that, that decrease in revenue. It's about 821,000 of that, of that decrease. So, that's the largest thing there impacting, the two largest things impacting the revenues. The expenditures, I, I didn't really have a lot to, a lot to point out with the expenditures. I don't know if you've got anything there, but...
Did you say that the change in revenue was because the replacement tax wasn't as much as we thought? Is that what you said?
The replacement tax overall was about 11.5 million in total that the district received this year. 1.7, 1.7 million was allocated to the operations and maintenance fund. In the prior year, that amount was about 2.2 million or 2.3 million, something like that.
Do we determine what we allocate to that, or is there a formula that determines?
No, we have that opportunity or that whatever, and chose to put more in the Ed Fund, because that's where we were the most fearful of a deficit, so.
You have that discretion, so it's...
Right.
Why?
Why the decrease in the replacement tax revenues? Because, and the only reason I mentioned that is because I'd heard something previously, the state of Illinois had some, they made some decision with regard to that.
Well, when we budgeted, we budgeted about 15% less, and Mike McKenzie and I watched this all year long, and so when we did our original budget, even when we did our amended budget, we kept that, that amount down. And then, when, when it, well, in fact, we were not sure that we were really going to get all the money until the last payment came in. So, which was more than what we thought. There was a, if you recall, we had anticipated about whatever the increase was, and anticipated, then heard at the very last minute that they were taking 15% off the top. So, I don't know if somehow that got rethought, or if the economic climate was such that things were just better than what they thought.
And the 15% off, that was the director from the state?
Right.
Okay, and that's, I think that's what I heard someplace.
Yeah.
The middle of this slide, you can see the proceeds from the sale of the capital assets. I think most of that's the sale of Irving.
Right.
It was over 500,000 of, of total there, I think. So, overall, we had a decrease of about 1.15 million in the, in this fund this year, which, which combined, there's a slight deficit fund balance in this fund as of June, June 2013. Transportation Fund, you can see actually some of the notes that are on this, on this page here. Revenue increased 783,000. That was, that was, the special education portion of the transportation claim was up significantly, and then the regular portion was actually down, I guess. But expenditures, overall, we had a deficiency in this fund, and some of the reasons for the increase in the expenditure are listed down at the block, at the bottom. Salaries and benefits up 203,000. I know your, the age of your bus fleet, I guess you'd say, has aging, and I think you're, you're maybe seeing some of the, the increase in the repairs and stuff. I think, you know, you'd expect that. Fuels and, fuel and parts up 386,000. And then, I think you also purchased, help me out here, Dr. Kenny, how many of those buses and vans?
At the beginning of last year, now just, you know, a year ago, we purchased four new special ed buses, and then three used of those white activity buses.
Yeah.
And just, just from an accounting standpoint, typically, a purchase like that would not be an expense. It would be a capital, capital item of some kind, wouldn't it? When you're buying equipment like that, sort of mixing oranges and apples here.
Right. In the, in your, in your world of reporting, it's, it would, it runs through just, in the governmental funds, it runs through as an expense. When we, when we come, when we come and do our work, if you, if you look at the front, the government-wide financial statements, and I don't want to confuse everybody here, but we do pull those out and capitalize those and depreciate those over time. So, yeah, that's right. This slide here, this is Dr. Kenny's slide here, and I kind of got this from him, and I think you're used to seeing this. And I think you're used to seeing this. What you've typically seen is your operating funds, just like we went through, the educational fund, the operations and maintenance, the transportation fund, and then the I R F, I M R F, social security fund. And in, what I just wanted to point out here was, you know, the fund balance at the end of the year for those four funds was 16.4 million, a slight increase, about 138,000 dollar increase from 2012 to 2013.
Now, is the working cash bonds that we've got included in that?
No.
It's not, is it?
That's the next slide.
Okay. That's totally separate.
This is that, I call it the left-hand side or the operational side.
Okay.
Yeah. Here's what I think you're...
Yeah.
So this slide's kind of a continuation. These are the rest of the funds. So you've got debt service and capital projects. There's the working cash. You can see 37.75 million in reserves there, TORT, life safety, and then totaled. But I think the number that you're used to focusing on is all those funds less debt service and capital projects. And if you look all the way to the right, the fund balance of those funds is 52.2 million, 1.2 million dollar increase over the end of 2012. So...
And just looking at the capital projects there, direct revenues 3.7 million and expenditures 14.8 or 14.9 million. So that account declined by that amount.
That's correct. But those expenditures are pure high.
Well, it's a mixture of a lot of expenditures.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Those are really capital expenditures, though.
Yes, they are.
That are really on the balance sheet, not on an income statement.
Yep.
One thing to point out on that particular slide, when you look at debt service, debt service is all about when we pay the bonds off or pay our payments every year. And the way the accrual process is for that has changed. So when you look at a fund balance year-end, just pretend it's 3 million, because that's what we set aside for tax abatements. The rest of it gets paid out. There is no balance there to try to reduce any other levy or anything like that.
This is a little graph that kind of shows the activity and the fund balances for each of the funds. Just, if there's no other questions, just in summary, I'd like to congratulate you. This is the third consecutive year on positive results. That's great. I know, you know, we've reduced some of the negative fund balances in some of the funds. And again, here's my caution, I guess. I know that 13 and 14 is presenting, is going to present some challenges. So, in the state and federal funding and uncertainties that will continue there, so...
I don't think I've ever seen an audit presentation yet that did not say caution must continue to be exercised.
I don't think you'll ever see an audit presentation that includes caution.
They'll never say, "Just go spend it all."
Yeah. I hope to take that out there sometime. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just real quickly, can I get you to, and I'm not quite sure how to phrase this, but I mean, we see a lot of big numbers up there, like with fund balances and in the positive and everything. But can you just give us an overall perspective of where we're at as a district? I mean, obviously, we're, some people could look at those numbers and think that we're overflowing in excess money where we know we're not. So either you or Dr. Kenny, can you just give us a, do you understand what I'm asking for?
Sure. I'll give my part and Mr. Atkins.
That's a tough question.
Chime in. You know, when you go to meetings and they talk about what kind of fund balances should you be looking at in a typical school finance situation? And they'll tell you, it would be nice to have somewhere between 25 and 50% of your expenditures. So when you looked at, if you go one more slide down, when you see that number, 52 million there, the, it's not a bad number, because obviously, it's more than 25%. It's considerably less than 50%. The caution that we've got to remember, though, is if you look at the working cash fund, 37, almost 38 million, so 52 million there looks good, but 38 million of it is borrowed. So we just need to kind of keep that in mind. I mean, it's there. We borrowed it for a reason, to have the cash flow. And we do dip into that and pay it back, you know, April and May and June. But it is, it's, you know, we've got a ways to go, to be considered really healthy.
That's all I wanted, wanted somebody to point out, is that, that's not all just gravy that we've got sitting somewhere.
Oh, no, not at all.
That's available. And I think it's great that we're showing, especially in the ed fund, showing positive or the negative fund balances at the end of the year, so we're moving in the right direction. But that sort of explains the caution also, is it's not 52 million that we've got available to us unless we dip into those reserves.
That's correct.
And it is about cash flow. I mean, if you looked at our fund balances at times in May or June, you know, we're down in the teens of millions, not 52 million. But then those funds are replenished when June property taxes come in.
Are we seeing, are we likely going to see decreased property tax revenues? We haven't really hit the throes of the decline in E A V yet.
We'll talk about that in about three minutes.
Okay.
Stand by.
Yeah, I would just, something Dr. Kenny said there is, right there, sometime in June, you got 27 and 1/2 million in real estate taxes, the first, first part of those payments. So, and that did replenish some of your reserves.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Well, it's good news. Really appreciate the very professional work that's done here. Thank you very much. And thanks also to those that really have to persevere through an audit, because it's a task.
It's lengthy, yeah. It's a big task here.
Now, let me just ask a couple of questions, if I could. Number one is, in the course of your audit, you do tests for certain things. I've asked this question before, am I asking it again?
Good.
In the course of your audit, did you find any evidence whatsoever of any misappropriation, misuse of funds, purchasing cards, or any other personal expenditures by any employee of this district?
Any, well, I don't, I don't, any misuse of funds or anything?
Anything that would cause you to raise a red flag and say this is wrong?
Oh, absolutely, no, no.
Okay.
Okay.
So any attempts to indicate that there's anything that's, there's any misuse or misappropriation of any funds by anybody involved in using purchasing cards or credit cards or anything else like that, you found no evidence of that in any of the work that you were doing?
No evidence.
And I know that you weren't auditing for that, but...
Right, right. That's where I just provide a question. I mean, we're not looking at every, we test samples and I would say we had found no instances of many misuse. I missed your, the first time around, I missed your, you said the word misuse, and I thought, oh, of course, there's expenditures of...
Misclassified, perhaps, or something like that, but...
I understand what you're saying.
We're getting to the issue of, is there any inappropriate behavior on the part of any employee?
We didn't find anything like that.
Thank you. In terms of the transparency of the discussion and the availability of our records and other information that was provided to you, did you find anywhere from anyone that they were not cooperative or did not provide you with what you asked for?
Oh, no, not at all, not at all.
Okay. Did you get any sense that any person, anyone they talked to at all, had anything that they were not trying to disclose to you, that they were hiding anything or presenting anything that you felt was less than the full truth?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay. I guess my term is prosecuting attorney.
I know.
But we get those questions, and people tend to think that there's some sort of thing going on there where that's the case. And it's good to have an outside professional who has a professional responsibility and a fiduciary responsibility to the district to make those comments.
And you are...
I appreciate that.
You're not here to give us a rosy picture. You're ethically obligated to tell us what's wrong.
Oh, that's, yeah, if there was any, if we would have reported any instance of anything that you were talking about there, that certainly that would have led to other discussions and...
And this is all a standard way to report? I mean, you have to follow, it's not GAAP for school districts. What is it?
GASB.
GASB. And so this is all...
Government accounting standards.
Right. This is all very standardized, and it's not painting a rosy picture or...
Oh, no, not at all. I mean, I don't, this is, you know, our audit's in accordance with the standards, and the financial statements are presented in such a way, and your annual financial reports presented in such a way.
And trust me, they don't hesitate to not report a rosy picture, because I've been here when they haven't. So, I mean, you know, you're the ones who tell us at the end of the day.
Right.
And when I first came on the board, that's what we were getting year after year. So...
We've talked about in the past that there are some unique ways that this district does, not incorrect ways, but there are some unique ways, like how we handle high school activity funds, I think. Is there anything particularly idiosyncratic that we should turn our attention to in how we handle our funds?
Well, obviously, and I don't, I don't know specific, but obviously, one of the things that we've always reported on for years and years and years, and it's, and it comes down to how many resources do you commit to an accounting group or what, you know, obviously, we've always said there's somewhat of a lack of segregation of duties, just because of the amount of personnel that are involved in some of those overlapping duties. And then, you know, so there, I guess, and we had that same, that same comment in this year as well. You know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure...
In other words, we have a small accounting staff, and it's difficult to have the things that might be possible with a larger accounting staff.
Yeah, and in a perfect, ideal setting, but 90% of the, whether it's school districts or companies or whoever I work with, I have that same, same comment for them as well. So, you're really not anything, nothing out of the norm here now.
Any other comments or questions? Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Did that help?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We will continue to use caution.
Dr. Kenny, I believe you're up next with the presentation on the tax abatement.
Key points I want to cover in this presentation include that most people will pay less in property taxes next spring than what they did this past year. We will levy less this year than we did last December. And last December, we levied less than the year before. We're going to lose about 700,000 in property tax revenues, because values of homes are going down. You will be voting on abating 1 and 1/2 million in lease bonds. And I've got a little bit more information tonight, because I think people need to fully understand what that is about. And yes, I was kind of hoping that tonight we'd be able to levy for South Town, but it's waiting another year. So, all right. Last board meeting, we did an estimate of revenues needed. That's just a number estimating what we would like to have to be able to use for our funding next year. Tonight, we're talking, we will publish a truth and taxation notice on December 9th, have the hearing then at the next board meeting three weeks from tonight. And then hopefully, right after that, we'll get the levy filed with the county clerk's office. Again, why do we talk about property taxes? Well, it's 66 million of revenue. It represents about 39% of our revenues for the district. So very important piece of revenue. And when we look at the revenues, just in general, almost 70% is residential, about 29% is commercial, and 2% is in industrial. So those are the big three. And each are treated a little differently in the assessor's office. So when we talk about doing this levy process, I just want to make sure that people understand when we talk about it. When we levy, we are strictly asking for permission to use funds if they're made available to us. When we levy for a particular amount, doesn't mean we're going to get it, and we'll reinforce that. We're just making a request to be able to use it if it's given to us. The extension is actually what we get. E A V is the regular value of a house divided by 3. So if you're talking about a $150,000 house, the E A V would be 1/3 of that, or 50,000. Tax rate, that's what the dollar amount is that is applied to the E A V and how the tax bill is created. And down below, those two lines are two different ways to look at the same formula, just in how a tax bill works. All right. So I said, we're going to, we're going to ask for more in our levy than what we're going to get. We typically do that. We've always done that here, and they, most districts, some of them almost make a game of it. We're going to be reasonably close. But last year, if you look at that middle column of numbers, that's what we presented to you to levy. And then on the right-hand column, that's what we actually got, about 1.8 million less than what we levied. Why do we levy more? Well, you'd never know what's going to happen between now and April or May. Maybe some TIF will automatically disappear, or some corporation will double their value or something. So funnier things have happened. And at this point in time, it's still a bit of an estimate when we talk to the assessor's office about what he thinks the value of the whole district will be. So we're always going to ask for a little bit more than what we're going to get. And we know that. And I'll show you how we figured out what we're asking for. Okay. This is an important chart, because people do need to kind of understand how this works. Those rates that you see in that middle column, when we talk about the levy for the ed fund, we base that on a tax rate of $2.18 per $100 of E A V as part of the bill. And those other rates that you see there, those are predetermined by law. If we wanted to levy for more in the educational fund, we would have to run a referendum in order to be able to do that. So we can't just make up a higher number, because values are going down. And those are the maximum rates that we're allowed to use. In the right-hand column, those are funds that we are actually allowed to levy for the actual amount. And I'll tell you in advance, the top three are the same as last year. The next two, both the bonds and the P B C lease bonds, those are the amounts we need to make the payments for next year. Now, I should also point out, on the P B C lease, it's hard to tell with the coloring here, but that is a different color. And that is because that's a million and 1/2 less than what we're supposed to pay next year. That is assuming you're going to have a positive vote on the tax abatement for tonight. Should have been 10,554,063, okay? All right. Now, these slides are a little bit out of order from what you might have seen earlier, but I just want to point out here, when I talk about doing a levy, and where do those numbers come from? Well, I look at the E A V, and I just model what a 2% increase would look like in the E A V for the whole district. And so I backfeed formulas into a spreadsheet. So if you remember the ones where we had the rate, so the rate looks at that E A V that you see up there and tells us what we're going to get in those amounts. And that's in that kind of shaded middle column there. For the specific amounts that we need, those are the ones that are very round numbers, like the TORT and the I M R F social security. Those are the amounts we need to be able to pay those bills next year. So those then look at what the E A V is, and it works backwards and comes out with, okay, so there's the rate that it's going to take. So if we were to really see the full 2% increase in E A V, the tax rate would be about 4.96.7 cents, okay? Okay? So, how do I come up with levy? Well, I just take that middle column and kind of round it a little bit because we know we're not going to get exactly that anyway. So, when we create the levy, there are just numbers that are very, very similar to that middle column for those that have rates associated with. The others are, again, the amounts that we levy. Okay? And you can go across and see again what was extended last spring, last summer. So, we're actually levying less than what we got last year. Okay. This is showing those same numbers. That middle column now, I'm looking at a two and a half percent decrease in the EAV. So, it went down to 1,300, I'm sorry, 1,308 million, basically. And again, we apply the formulas to that EAV to figure out what we think we're going to get. And again, those numbers like the TORT and so forth feed those in. So, what we really think we're going to get is in the neighborhood of about $66,163,000. Okay? Now, we're still levying the 68 million, but that's what we really think we're going to get. And if, in fact, a full two and a half percent decrease does occur, then the tax rate would be about 505. Now, last year, when I did this, I think we had like a 2.8 percent decrease in the EAV, but it only came out to about 2.2 when the time came around and made it to send out bills. Okay? If I'm going too fast, please feel free to ask questions. All right. So, again, what does it look like when you get the rates on? You can see what we're going to levy in the left-hand column, the rates in the middle column, and what we think we'll get in the far right. So, we're going to levy 68 million and get about 66 point, a little less than 66.2. Now, again, I based that on a two and a half percent decline in the EAV. And again, the PBC lease amount is based on you passing that $1.5 million abatement. One more time, this is based on a two and a half percent decline in the EAV. And that's important because I'm going to throw another number at you in a minute or two. Okay? Again, if you look at what we're levying this year versus last year, we are levying less. Now, I did this last year and I said, I think it's important that people understand their tax bills will be less. So, in 2010, they paid $1972.28 for a tax bill. 2011, it went down to $1931.78 because their house decreased 2.07 percent in value. That's the average for District 150 EAV. 212, now, I changed this number a little bit from last year because, in fact, the EAV didn't decline quite as much as we thought. So, last year, that same house that was worth 120,000 in 2010 went down to 1909. Now, this slide, assuming a two percent drop in the EAV for the average home, would take their bill down to 1898.54. Now, you may ask, I talked about a two and a half percent decline in the EAV, but here I'm talking about two percent instead of two and a half. The difference is, I think most homes, the average home will decline around that two percent. The other half percent is thrown on because of Methodist and a change in the law allows them to declare more property as exempt. In fact, 25 properties in Peoria County, I'm sorry, in District 150 have been declared exempt, and the assessor's office went ahead and took that off our value. So, I don't want people to think that they'll see the full two and a half percent decline. A lot of that's coming from Methodist. And so, that hurt us about 5 million in our EAV. Okay? Now, you can see here, there's that same.
Just a question on that. Have they been requested or have they been declared exempted?
It's still challengeable, but the assessor's office has already taken it off. So, those are the numbers amusing.
And how much did they take off?
About 5 million, I think, in the EAV.
Okay. Thank you.
So, these are the tax bills, again, assuming those declines that we talked about. And is everybody going to have this average? No, but it is a pretty good average. And obviously, it shows up when we talk about looking at the EAV, how it did stay level for three years in the middle there, and for three years now in a row, it's declined. And so, again, looking at what we will see for tax, property tax revenues, you can see the steady decline there, too. And it's because the EAV is going down. Okay? All right. Now, when I talked about those special numbers that we are, we said we need this amount to pay our bills. Here is a copy of the, and part of it's right straight out of our audit. So, you can see 2013, what we actually spent. Last year, when we did our levy and collected in property taxes, it was at 2.8 million and 2.85 million combined. We actually lost about 76,000. Now, I left those two levy amounts combined the same for this year, even though we lost a little money next year, because our balances are okay. At about 2 million, we're better than 25 percent of our expenditures, but we're well under half. But I left it in order to keep the tax rate down a little bit. So, I didn't change that. This is TORT. That's the other big one. We levied 6.4 million last year. Now, it looks like 6.2 came in. It's because last year is, when you do your levy, it affects two different budgets. So, when we do this levy, it does technically affect the second half of this year and the first half of next year. So, that's why there's a little bit of a discrepancy. But I left that the same. And the reason, again, while we made great progress in reducing our deficit in TORT, we still have a little ways to go. So, we began the year with about a $2.7 million deficit last year, ended with a 1.8. So, we're starting with that 1.8 this year, and I think we'll reduce it some. But I think that the levy of 6.4 million is the right number. And again, wouldn't mind raising it and getting rid of that deficit faster, but that raises the tax rate. So, we try to be sensitive to that. All right. This just shows in that kind of a greenish bar, those are the levy amounts for the PBC lease numbers. And there you can see, under 2013, that's that 10.5 million that I was talking about. And when you add in then the regular District 150 bonds, we would have needed to levy about 16.1 million, but combined, we're going to do a million and a half less if you pass that resolution tonight. Now, I wish people could see these numbers. They don't quite show up like I'd like. But, so, how does that abatement work? Well, this is right off my spreadsheets, and so you can see under rent fund, 9,540,000. Okay? So, again, the formulas, work it through, and it produces a tax rate then of about $5.05 by us not levying that extra million and a half dollars. If we were to levy for it, on the right-hand side, you can see that it produces a tax rate then of about $5.17 per hundred dollars value. So, it would make people's property tax bills go up, obviously, if we levy for that extra million and a half dollars. And this probably shows it a little better. So, $120,000 house, when we talk about the abatement, you're saving the taxpayers $45, up to $300,000 house, you're saving them about $115. And I think that's important because as we talk about abatements in the future, whether or not it's a good idea, I mean, we're giving up, obviously, some maintenance things we'd like to do. But as we talk about it in the future and looking at the potential of the county sales tax, I think people need to understand what an abatement does and how it works. Any questions? That's then the levy that we'll present in our documentation on December 16th for your approval.
And then we'll have a vote on that.
Right. You'll vote on it that night.
We'll have a vote this evening, though, on the abatement.
Yes, and vote tonight on the abatement.
Dr. Kenny, thank you for your clear and understandable presentation. I think we appreciate those.
I went a little fast, but.
No, no, but I mean, we all appreciate that. And again, job well done.
The last item under finances is the purchase overs, over $2,500. Dr. Kenny, do you have anything to say about those or does anyone have any questions of him?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. We've reached the point in our agenda with the consent agenda. Ms. Patel, would you care to read that for us this evening?
Sure. Item number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting totaling 4,000, I'm sorry, I can't see from this far, $4,846.89. The proposed action is that the Board of Education accept the listed donations to be accepted and letters of appreciation sent to the donors. We'll just particularly note, hand-knitted hats were donated by Roscoe United Methodist Church to the children at Northmore. Item number two, the payment of bills. Item number three, human resources report. The proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, a collective bargaining agreement between the Peoria Federation of Support Staff, Cafeteria, Clerical, Paraprofessional, and School-Related Personnel, IFT, AFT, AFL, CIO, and the Board of Education of the City of Peoria, Number 150. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2015, between the Peoria Federation of Support Staff and the Board of Education of the City of Peoria, District 150. Item number six is the approval of a settlement agreement and general release of claims with the Peoria Federation of Support Staff, IFT, AFT, AFL, CIO, Local 1699. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached settlement agreement and general release of claims. This settlement agreement is entered into by the Board of Education of Peoria School District Number 150 and the Peoria Federation of Support Staff, IFT, AFT, AFL, CIO, Local 699, as complete resolution to all claims and controversies arising from the union's unfair labor practice charge filed March 1, 2012, and the arbitrator's opinion and award dated August 3, 2012 regarding this charge. Item number seven is the tax abatement for the 2013 levy. The proposed action, the administration recommends that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to abate debt service taxes in the amount of $1,500,000 for the 2013 tax levy as it relates to the Public Building Commission lease bonds. Item number eight, contract extension with first student. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the contract extension with first student for augmenting the present workforce. This extension will be for the 2014 calendar year. Commencing January 1, 2014, the rates of compensation payable hereunder during the ensuing contract year are increased by a factor of 2.5 percent, with the primary rate for alternate bid being increased from $33.66 an hour to a rate of $34.50 per hour, subject to the terms of the original bid and are based on current number of routes. Since 10 routes per day are guaranteed, a projected minimum cost for the year will be $303,600. Sorry, this last one's long. I need a drink. Item number nine, recommendation for board authorization to begin supplemental educational services. The proposed action is that the Board of Education authorize the implementation of financial year 14 supplemental educational services as follows. The schools served will be Franklin, Glen Oak, Harrison, Thomas Jefferson, Roosevelt, Whittier, Mark Bills, Lincoln, Rolling Acres, Sterling Middle School, Trewin K8, Von Steuben, Peoria High, Manuel Academy. And the providers delivering services will be Achieves, High Points, A+ Tutoring, ATS Project Success, Babbage Net School, Chai Tutors with a Z, Empowerment Learning, Grade Cracker, iPad Tutoring, one-to-one online tutoring, homework mastery, primetime computers, All Students Succeed/Solvent Learning, 24 Hours Tutoring, Tutoria con iPads, 24/7 Educate Online, and Tutor Owl. Concludes the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you. Would any member of the board care to have any of these items pulled for a separate vote? In that case, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? Dr. Lathan?
I'm sorry.
I have two. On number eight, the contract extension with first student, the 34.50 per hour is not what bus drivers make. That is what we pay to first student for all their administrative costs and benefits and that kind of thing, correct?
That is correct. Keep in mind, they take care of their own work comp, their own other kinds of benefit issues and so forth. So, this is all-inclusive.
And their hourly rate for drivers is comparable to what we're paying?
I believe, Anthony's here, yeah.
Okay. And the other thing, on the supplemental educational services, am I correct that any organization or company that is approved by ISBE, we have no choice of apparent requests and that's who we use? They, once they're approved by ISBE, we cannot not have students use them, correct?
That is correct unless there's an issue, and then we submit the issue or concern about that particular provider to ISBE. ISBE makes a decision whether or not they can continue, and then they send us back some suggestions. We did have one company that had some unethical practices, and we submitted that information to ISBE, and they came back and gave us the decision that we did not have to allow them to be a tutor.
But that's why there's such a long list of providers is because anybody can apply to ISBE, and then ISBE can approve them, and we could have 100 of them.
Yes. And then the parents choose the providers. Normally, they rank it one, two, three, their choices, and then there's a sign like that. But this is also a mandate for schools that have not made AYP for three consecutive years that we must set aside money for supplemental educational services.
And the purpose of the law is to allow parents to choose from a marketplace of tutors with the idea being that they will choose the high-quality tutors. In practice, there's not really, parents don't have a control group of many children with which to try this, and there's not a lot of information to help parents choose. And the Chicago Tribune has documented extensively how this is not a very good use of funds, and in Chicago, has been a very corrupt use of funds.
And I know we used to do this. I don't know if it's still happening or not, but some schools used to hire tutors to come in during the day to do some of the supplemental. Are we still able to do that?
We have daytime tutors that are hired.
To do this supplemental?
Not to do this supplement, not with these. Now, these providers can hire our employees as like, you know, like a second job. But we do have schools that use their Title I funds to bring in daytime tutors to support the educational program that's been outlined in their Title I school-wide plans that you approved at the last.
But that really has nothing to do with this.
No, it has nothing to do with SES.
Okay.
Any other comments on this or other issues?
How are we coming along on hiring enough drivers that we don't have to renew first student?
We have about, Anthony's provided us an update. There are about 32 non-employees that are at different stages of training for drivers. But keep in mind, as soon as we hire drivers, sometimes we end up losing drivers. So, it's kind of in and out, kind of revolving door as it relates to those drivers.
Well, it's a difficult, it's a job with strange hours. And I think that makes it difficult.
Any other questions or comments on any of the items?
Well, I think maybe just a little bit more can be said about what Ms. Patel just said. It's a job with strange hours, and we just kind of left it there. But perhaps, you know, we know, but again, for the public benefit, what those strange hours.
Well, you drive a morning route, and then you have an afternoon route. So, normally about 6 o'clock in the morning, they report to work, they're finished by 9:00. Well, depends on if you have a tier one or tier two school. So, if you're a tier one school, probably about 9:00. And tier one will be starting at 7:30. Tier two schools, starting at 8:30, they're finished around 10:00. So, you have some drivers, although they're also, lunchtime, they run the routes that deliver the food, and then others would not report back to work until about 1:30. So, you have anywhere between 9:00 and 1:30 free, or 10:00 and 1:30 free. So, that's what she means by the strange hours, that they don't have some. Some other school districts in some other states, the drivers hold two jobs with the district. They start out their morning as a bus driver, then they work as a teacher assistant throughout the school day, then they go back in the afternoon. And most times, they are assigned to the school that they work at as a teacher assistant that they drive for oftentimes. So, that's how sometimes school districts are able to make up for that.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Before I call for the vote, I've got a thought or two here. The consent agenda item for tax abatement represents this board's fulfillment of a second year of a three-year promise we made to abate $1.5 million of annual property taxes. And this will be accomplished by maintaining our capital improvements levy at the same rate as last year. We were able to do this because two years ago, through the good efforts of State Representative David Leach, we finally received funds from the state based on capital projects we completed over the prior decade. As you may have noticed in the audit report, our capital fund account declined by $11.2 million due to spending of those funds for required repairs and maintenance and for new construction. And when the board promised to abate taxes for three years, the state of Illinois was funding about 95 percent of the school aid formula. This year Springfield is funding 89 percent, and next year they've already said that it will be 85 percent. That additional 4 percent reduction will cost District 150 another $2 million next year, and the market value of taxable property in our district has declined by 2.5 percent, roughly, or about another $700,000 in tax revenues. So our tax revenues, as you can see from that bar chart, are below, and the EAV is below, the 2007 level. The audit report tonight showed that on an operating basis, District 150 has been in the black for three consecutive years, and it's been a long time since anyone's been able to say that. In its recognition of the hard work Dr. Lathan, Dr. Kenny, and their administration, staff and faculty have done to manage our costs. So with this tax abatement vote, District 150 is keeping its promise to taxpayers, while the state's school aid promises seem to be written in disappearing ink. Our priority as a district, and it's bigger than tax abatement, is to provide the students, parents, and taxpayers with school facilities that are safe, well-maintained, and attractive. With this district facing a $6 million deficit in the current year, I'm going to find it difficult to support this tax abatement next year. That $1.5 million could air-condition another school, upgrade athletic facilities, or make state mandated improvements in any number of buildings. If that money is not in the capital fund, it can be transferred from the educational fund. Now, that's not a good idea, but we may not have much choice in coming years. Now, there is good news, and that is if the school facility sales tax for Peoria County referendum passes next March, this discussion won't be necessary. Sales tax receipts of about $9 million annually could fund repairs and new construction, along with some potential property tax abatement. But if the sales tax fails, and the state continues to pull the school aid rug out from under us, next year this board should be prepared to make a prudent financial decision on this tax abatement, even if it would not be a popular one. With that, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Aye.
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 With great reluctance on that issue, aye. Thank you. The deliberation agenda?
Item number 10 is review of suspensions. The proposed action is that the review of suspensions listed on the report dated November 25, 2013 be approved as presented.
As a member of the discipline committee tonight, I'll second that. Madam Secretary?
Aye.
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 Epstein?
Aye.
Item 11 is revocation of board probation. The proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated November 25, 2013 be approved as presented.
Second.
Aye.
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 Epstein?
Aye.
Item 12...oh, sorry. Item 12 is expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated November 25, 2013 be approved as presented.
Second. Madam Secretary?
Aye.
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 Epstein?
Aye. Can we read the following part?
Yeah.
Okay. Students...I'm sorry. Let's get to it here. Apologize. Students expelled by the board are referred to by number, thereby ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session.
And can I...I abstain because I was slightly late, so I missed that discussion.
Yes.
People always ask.
Thank you. We've now come to the place on our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come to the podium and give your name for the benefit of our minutes. The time limit for any one speaker is two minutes, and the time limit for any one topic is eight minutes. No person less than 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by his or her parent, guardian, or teacher, except with the unanimous consent of the board. Savino Sierra.
Savino Sierra, 1708 South Stanley. I'd like to know, how come you started your meeting late at 6:20, where on the calendar you've got 6:00, and on this sheet here, it's 6:00, too? That's...isn't a very good example to our citizens and the critic club and whatever have you. This is what I mean when we have to have discipline. If it's 6:00, it should be 6:00. And so let's do a better job, will you? And I'd just like to say that some of you people, at the last meeting, you said you backed the superintendent wholeheartedly. Well, if you do, then you're part of the problem of the...I preach all the time about discipline. So you better talk amongst yourself and see what you can do, because you're still having problems at the schools, and don't tell me you're not. And so quit blowing your own bugle and get with it. It's really sad, you know, that you people have been up there for a while and still, you know...you talk a good talk, but some of the results, end results ain't too favorable with a lot of people, a lot of our citizens, you know? When I stand up here and talk, I don't just talk for Savino, I talk for a lot of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jerry Knapp.
And I agree with Mr. Sierra. I think this meeting should have started with an apology to the public for starting 20 minutes late, or an acknowledgement of what you were doing, which is neither here nor there. I'd like to mention, the auditors talked about a little bit about the P cards or the credit cards. You know, I look at these P cards, and in half hour, I can see where, you know, one administrator charged $6.50 at Burger King. I mean, please, $6.50 at Burger King? That's a lunch. You know, that's some administrator getting a free lunch at Burger King. And it goes on beyond that, you know, the taxes that are paid, and believe me, that'll come to the fore here in the next couple of meetings as this is presented to you. I don't understand how you can look at these P cards and just say, oh, everything is glorious. I'm not saying that the auditors don't do a good job, but that is one glaring error, as far as I'm concerned. At the last meeting, we talked about Lee Winger. Didn't mention his name, but the Journal Star did. I think it's important that you understand, here's an article that was written on November 9th, "Fewer People Being Banned From Schools." This is the Columbus Dispatch. And one of the reasons why that is, is the number of lawsuits that have risen over this, and especially from the ACLU. You know, this is egregious, that this man has been banned from the schools for life. I'll say it again, and again, and again. I can't even get the information. I call security, they don't even return my call. You know, I put in a FOIA, and we get back that Ms. Cruz and I are now declared a group. Well, Ms. Butler, I'm going to tell you something. You and Dr. Lathan must be a group, the way you act with her. I mean, you never take issue with her on any issue. And it's sad that you don't stand up. You're her boss, not her friend. I'd like to say again, on this idea of volunteers, you expect people to come into this district and volunteer. Mr. Winger was a volunteer for over 20 years in this district. He had one altercation because a girl verbally assaulted his wife. Verbally assaulted, should have been arrested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Cruz.
Information about the community eligibility option was presented at the October 11, 2011, board meeting, but not mentioned on the agenda or in the minutes. However, District 150 was accepted into the program in August. When did board members first learn about this program? How is such information communicated to you? What role does the board play in major decisions? Why didn't taxpayers have a right to learn why the district was applying for a volunteer federal program that pays for the lunches of all children in a school when 40 percent meet the low-income requirements? Why shouldn't we hear your individual opinions before, not after, major decisions are made? More importantly, why was this decision made without your vote? Your policy states that final authority for all matters concerning the district lies with the Board of Education, and policy states that deliberation, debate, or decision-making should not be conducted by email. That seems to imply that public board meetings are the appropriate venue for making decisions. Isn't that the purpose of the consent agenda? Again, when can we expect transparency, which includes discussion, and I have heard a little more lately? I do not have an issue with feeding children whose parents cannot afford to feed them. I have some questions, which I believe should have been discussed before the vote. What if a considerable number of children choose not to eat cafeteria food? Does the cafeteria prepare it for everyone and throw away the food not eaten? Or does the cafeteria estimate and prepare enough food for those who usually eat the free lunch? Does the federal government provide a flat amount for each school per day? Who profits from any money not spent? Also, if, as planned, the program ends in 2015 or 16, what then?
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow.
Good evening. Let's see, as you know, we met with 50 members of the manual faculty to address serious concerns they have with regards to the school's leadership. You have a list of those concerns. Most telling to me is the number of teachers, not to mention secretaries, who've left the school over the past several years. The turnover has been astronomical. This trend follows the leader. Our employees and our students certainly deserve better. The bigger question that begs to be asked is what criteria are used to determine effective versus ineffective leadership? And further, what purpose is there for continually shifting administrators? The Machiavellian approach befuddles me. Board members, you have a packet of info from the union with regards to the current climate and culture in our district. Further, you have specific information regarding several trains that need to be put back on the right track. Certainly, some of these issues can be addressed at our strategic communications meeting, but given the extent and the depth of the issues that need to be resolved, I recommend that the board meet with us, the union, and I'd also recommend a meeting with the unity council as soon as possible. Thank you.
Mary Fran Westler.
Mary Fran Westler, President Local 6099, Peoria Federation of Support Staff. As well as being a district employee, I am a District 150 taxpayer, homeowner, and parent. I have an interest in the success of our school district, as well as ensuring that Local 6099 members have a collective bargaining agreement that protects their rights and allows them to continue to provide essential services to students and families. I address you tonight wearing my union president's hat. I would like to acknowledge the board's approval of a two-year extension of our contract. Speaking on behalf of the 6099 Executive Board, we are pleased that our members have the security of knowing that there is an agreement in place. The Peoria Federation of Support Staff includes cafeteria, clerical, and paraprofessional employees. Our members work hard every day, and I know that you know, our schools could not operate without them. What we do directly impacts and influences students, often those needing the most encouragement and assistance. We all know that our district is not perfect and continues to face many challenges. In recent years, district employees have been asked to take on more and more, including support staff. My colleague that just spoke, President Atkins-Dutrow, has taken the lead in seeking solutions for issues facing our teachers, including some that also affect support staff, and I thank him for his leadership. I would also like to thank Superintendent Lathan for deciding to ask the board to grant paid time off for district employees who suffered catastrophic loss in the recent tornadoes. Our contract extension expires in 2015, and in order to move forward during the next two years, all of us, union, administration, and school board, must endeavor to work together in a manner that is not adversarial, but cooperative and solution-oriented, and in the best interests of all parties. That is my intent. I hope you feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lathan, would you care to respond in any fashion?
Some of the comments, just to go back, that we are very pleased the board approved the contract tonight for 6099, and we were able to get the contract extension through. So we appreciate that, the efforts of the team members that sat on negotiation team. Thank you for that. As it relates to any concerns, at first, as I've shared with Jeff, you need to start with the building principal, and then you work your way up. But you must first present your concerns to the building principal, and that's been made clear on several occasions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any presentations or suggestions by board members? Reverend Butler?
Yes. In regards...
Your mic.
In regards to the state conference that you attended, do you know when we might hear a report from?
December 16.
We are going to talk about that on the 16th of December. And I have a substantial amount of notes and things, but I have not...
Can we put a time limit on it?
You can give me five minutes on the watch on any one topic. Do you think we can work that out?
Sure.
We'll have very succinct comments for you. I trust that we didn't bore you last year.
Yeah, I would just add that we...there was a lot of information to digest, and I appreciate the opportunity to give you more of a, maybe not a lengthy, but rather a concise, yet substantive discussion of what we learned.
We're referring to the annual meeting of the Illinois Association of School Boards in Chicago this past weekend, and the events that took place there and the presentations, some very useful information and some very engaging discussion. That being said, anyone else? Ms. Wolfmeyer?
I would like to ask, if it's possible, at the December 16 meeting, if we could get an update and a presentation from administration on the subject of what we're going to do with athletics in the fall of 2014. I think there's been some new information budget-wise, and also in light of the article that was in the paper, I think, this past week about the new complex that's going to go in, out in North Peoria with the dome and everything. I would just like to see if we could get an update on information, and perhaps even a recommendation from the staff on what direction they like to move, whether...I mean, the question was to put money into the stadium complex or at the individual schools. Another reason I like to sort of move this decision up is we've got some partners that if we are going to not use the stadium next year, they need to know that sooner rather than later. And in an effort to accommodate them and their needs, I'd just like to see a presentation on the 16th, if the board feels they have enough information in January after the first year to make a decision or make...take a vote. We can do that, if not, that's fine, too. But I'd like to sort of keep that to the forefront and keep moving on it. So if we could get that information, do you think that's possible by the 16th? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Patel?
My thing is a very small thing. Now that we're buzzard on so many more doors for access, you have to buzzard.
Security access, I believe.
Yes. I have made it...
I would say you use EZARV.
Now that you must buzz in to so many more buildings, I have noticed that many of the buzzer intercom systems we have installed, being fancy and new, they don't actually buzz. So the person on the outside does not actually know when the door has unlocked, and you see a lot of parents standing there pulling the door over and over.
See, it's a soft sound, and sometimes it's the door on the left as opposed to the door on the right. We just need to put a sound.
Yeah, well, and also, there has to be...because at Sterling, it's just the click as the thing unlocks. If there's a bus going by, you can't hear it.
as the thing unlocks, and if there's a bus going by, you can't hear it. So like, the secretary needs to say, come in, or we need to put a chime on it or something.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, presentations, reports from board committees?
I will just comment that my dad is in town for his first District 150 Grandparents' Day.
Excellent.
He arrived this afternoon. We're looking forward to that tomorrow.
All right, that's great.
Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes. With that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.